To the Monday, December sixteenth Board of Selectment meeting. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded. I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next is the approval of December second meeting.
Motion.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Is there anybody here for citizen participation that would like to address the board that's not scheduled this evening? Not seeing anybody, I'll move on to public hearings. First up, we have Imperial Buffet requesting a transfer of restaurant all alcoholic license. It's an application of transfer of license to Twelve Baskets LLC doing business with Sky Buffet and change of location to three twenty-four East Main Street. Appropriate information has been provided. I'll let you introduce yourselves this evening.
Hi, I'm Brian Chang, the owner of Imperial Buffet, also the new owner of Sky Buffet.
Okay.
And I'm Stephen Greenwald, I'm representing Brian.
Okay, very good. Why don't you discuss what it is you're looking for this evening from the board?
I just need to transfer my existing license from Imperial Buffet to the new location, Sky Buffet.
Okay. Within your request and application for a petition for license change, we also look to the different department heads for their input. We have from the building commissioner, this is industrial zoned allowable use. The building currently under renovation will be fully handicapped accessible in these states. Town planner, okay with site plan approved on five twenty-one thirteen. Tax collector indicates there was some past due, but it's my understanding, I just came to understand that these past due taxes have been paid in full. Town treasurer says there's no outstanding liens, nothing from the fire chief and no issues or concerns from the police chief. So you're moving your business?
Yes.
Okay.
To the new location.
And you're renaming it as well?
Yes, Sky Buffet, because I, we have a new ownership came in and then I just want to bring the restaurant.
Okay.
Because that's the reason why we want to change the name.
Okay. Anything else changing that you can see, just generally speaking, what type of restaurant you're looking to make it that's different from the last one we're used to?
Definitely it's going to be better.
Better, okay. All right. I'll go to the board members, see if they have any questions or comments.
Sir, when do you plan on moving? When will it be ready?
My target is maybe at the end of January or beginning of February.
On the, I know it says it's fully handicap accessible. Have you had a chance to speak with the Commission on Disability and go for just to go over everything to make sure everything's okay?
Not yet, but I will.
Well, you should got to do it. No, you don't want to do the construction and then maybe something is not right. So you should, you can check with Mr. Valani tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll put you in contact with the chairman.
Okay.
And that way, everything will be nice and, you know, done right properly. You don't have to, you know, do it over again or whatever.
Absolutely.
Now, when I used to take my little cousins there, they used to love those fish. Will the fish still be there or are they gone?
Most of it.
Okay, all right. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, Brian?
Thanks. Just a quick question, as I'm looking at number thirteen on the application, the disclosure of licensed disciplinary action. Was that for Imperial Buffet or is that another license holder?
Never happened. Not from Imperial Buffet. No, we never did.
Well, I just don't know what this means because it doesn't ring a bell with me, but I'm not sure exactly is that from a prior business entity or another business entity or I don't know what that is. It's fairly, it's recent too, so.
In the same location or different location?
I don't know what it is, I'm just asking you, is it from another business or is it something that happened in Imperial?
Maybe from another business, but not from this location.
Okay, so what other business is that?
Okay, I also own another restaurant in Franklin.
Okay.
And that's what happened.
Oh, so that's out of Franklin?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see, Ichigo Ichy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that entity still continuing or does that?
Yes.
Okay, so you operate that business and this business?
Yeah, at the same time.
Okay, all right. And you're moving your entire operation from the existing location over to the former Doc's Sports Bar, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there going to be anything left in that original location?
Unless the landlord wants it, otherwise we're going to move everything over there.
Okay, I mean, nothing related to you or your business?
No.
Okay. I'm all set.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion as to the change of address to three twenty-four East Main Street.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. And I'm looking for a motion for a change manager to be Yan Ru Tong.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. So sir, check with Rick tomorrow morning.
Yeah, if you give me a call, I can give you the contact information for the gentleman.
Yeah.
Good luck. Take care.
Next up, we have a scheduled meeting with Melissa Thomas, Community Development Officer. And with her is Larry Duncan, your town planner.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. The purpose of today's hearing is to initiate and open the discussion on the community development strategy. As you know, the CDS serves to summarize various planning documents used by a community and it to outline an action plan. The original strategy was adopted by your board in two thousand and four and has been updated annually. As part of the application process, I'll be holding three meetings with your board. Tonight's meeting is to begin the discussion on the community development strategy. Our next meeting will be held on January sixth, on which I'll provide your board with suggestions and comments received. And then our final meeting will be held on January twenty-seventh. At that point, your board will be asked to vote and approve on the revised CDS. At the conclusion of the meeting, your board will be authorizing the activities that will be submitted in the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen CDBG application, which is due on February fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. In your packets for this evening, I have included our previous adopted strategy as well as a drafted two thousand and fourteen strategy that town planner Larry and I have been working on.
Okay. Are there any proposals that you're looking at providing to this board prior to this in terms of what the next steps are?
At this moment, no. Today is just initially to open the discussion and to receive any community input.
Okay. All right, I'll go to the board members and see if they have any comments or suggestions, recommendations.
Thanks, Bill. Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, how are you?
Good. Just looking this over over the weekend and reviewing some of the areas, I'm going to give Rick some areas tomorrow. A lot of these things that says ongoing, and in some cases, I understand what ongoing means, but other cases, I'm not sure. So I'd like to have some clarification, exactly what it means. Do we have a plan? Is it working? Are there any setbacks?
Certainly.
Okay, because I think that's important. Now, we can talk about some of the areas that we've done before, right? We can talk about that, so it's okay to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think, I think Main Street is always a, I think it's something that, you know, looking back over thirty years, I think we've gone a long way on Main Street and a lot of with the facades, reconstructions of sidewalks, a lot of assistance from the highway surveyor in helping out different areas. But I think we always have to look at that because I think that's the main thoroughfare, people go through it. And so I think we have to look at that just to see if it's the right concept going forward, if this is what we want.
Okay.
What can we look at? So I think that's always something that, even though we've done a lot of improvements, but there's still maybe some things that we can do. On open space and recreation, you know, just going forward, what areas, are there areas that we could protect from development? If it's not, if it's not going to be used for a possible town building or if it's a good piece of land for industrial development, what can we, you know, is there something we could do with that?
Okay.
There was an interesting article in the paper this weekend, I think it was Sunday's paper, on the economies of local communities. So I think the main trust is that we have to, you know, number, let me see, on page four, number one, continue to build on strong, well-established economic development engines in Milford to increase employment opportunities for town residents in bringing in like high-tech biotech industries. And it said that as we go forward, the communities can't depend on federal aid anymore or even local aid because there's a good chance that it'll be level funded or be even decreased in the future. So the communities, it set up a whole program that maybe some of the communities should look at, but I think this is a, it's always been an important step imperative that the town look at this along with open space and all that. And the Main Street revitalizing, Main Street. And the board talked at the last meeting about traffic. You don't know anything about that, Larry, right? Traffic, so we talked about that. So these are the areas, but I'll talk to Rick tomorrow and come up with some areas where I'd like to have further information on
Great.
what does ongoing mean.
Okay.
And then it has once, a couple of things in here about the IDC. You know, do we have a plan? I mean, what is it? How are we engaging in those areas? You know, how do we go forward? How do we increase the effectiveness of attracting industry? Once again, the board's done a lot. Remember Larry, we formulated those nice fancy pamphlets that we would give out or put out in business publications on Compton, Milford, land available, the infrastructure that we have, the roads that are maintained well. So I just think it's important to look at those areas all the time. It's not something that we can say, okay, we've done something, we can forget about. I think we always have to revisit it.
Okay.
Those are some of the areas and some of the thoughts that I have on this, okay?
Great.
And how does the money look for next year?
It's very competitive.
Yeah.
We're going to start working on our application, so we're definitely going to give it another try.
And we still have our consultant, right?
We do, yes.
Who advises us, okay.
Exactly.
I think that's, you know, I think Sue Clark did a great job with that, very successful.
Yes.
And utilizing the consultant really helped in a lot of cases, in every case.
Yes, we'll be using the same consultant this year as well.
Okay, good luck, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you. Melissa, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I looked over the proposed strategy and then also saw what was done in eleven. And a couple of things I'd like to focus on. And this may be sort of perfectly related, but as we get into the open space and recreation and it looks like it's Roman numeral, Roman numeral number three, and then goal one, I'm on page three. It's talking about continue to explore all possible funding sources to preserve open space and enhance recreation areas. One of the things that I'd like to do, and it's something that I've really been kind of thinking about for a while and want to do, is to get the land off of Louisa Lake, the former Consigly property, under a conservation restriction. And I know town council sent us correspondence back in August, really talking about two ways to do it. Either a conservation easement or maybe a direct conveyance to the Conservation Commission. But you know, when the town purchased those forty-plus acres, the representation always was that that was going to be open space.
Okay.
And right now, there's nothing binding that. So conceivably, a different Board of Selectmen or even this Board of Selectmen, if the decision was made to go forward for whatever, there's really nothing to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
And I think it's just such a beautiful, unique piece of land that we really need to do, to follow through on that. So what I would envision is you working with town council, with town planner, and also reaching out to the Conservation Commission to see if that's a feasible way to do it or if not, find a nonprofit charitable holding company similar to, I think, what Walden Woods has that it could be conveyed to. But you know, it's really something that I think needs to be done. Part and parcel of that, there was an expression made to try to increase the parking lot area in Louisa Lake. So obviously, you know, whatever land can't be used for that would be subject to the conservation restriction. So that's something that I'd like to really see go forward. And again, I don't know to the extent that you might be able to do it through your program, but you know, as I see the strategy, I mean, it fits right in.
Okay.
So if I could do nothing else but just kind of spur that on and see if we could track that through.
I'll look into that.
I picked up a couple of times, you've just got to update a little bit, the handicap accessible restroom up at the High School Field. You've got a budget in there of a hundred fifty thousand. The updated number is about three twenty-three. Okay, so I saw that on at least three locations in the strategy. You know, other than that, I mean, you know, obviously, these are all goals and strategies that we desire, that we're working on. I didn't really see anything else that jumped out at me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I'd echo the comments from the board members and specifically the areas that I had interest in and wanted to see pursued. It starts on the bottom of page three, economic development. And for me, it's really a combination of two things. So when we look at goal one on page four and goal two on page four, it's what the economic development opportunities are and the revitalization continue to enhance downtown Milford. There's some items here for the planning board. Be interesting to have you pursue some of those design concepts. And also just, you know, I'm not sure what it is, but I think there needs to be more of a plan as it relates to downtown Milford.
Okay.
What it is we'd like to see, how we outreach to the community to see what it is they're looking for from their downtown. And I agree with Dino, it's our Main Street, it's the main thoroughfare. It's where people can get their impressions, good or bad, from the community and what the opportunities are associated with that. There's been some work that I know has gone on from community development as related to Jefferson Street. I think that's significant because you're not going to have a vital Main Street if the streets next to it or behind it are not maintained, its sidewalks are not clear, the housing opportunities are, those buildings are at least in good shape. And so what I'd like to see is your office work with planning, work with the IDC and see what type of strategies we can develop there. And if nothing else, some of the funds that come in can go towards that planning. But I'd like to see something really more concrete over the course of the next year or two. There are opportunities that, and if we benchmark other communities, certainly Franklin is one of them, but there are others that exist that have done a great deal more than Milford has with their industrial development planning and their Main Street revitalization. And so I'd like to see us look towards some of those communities, see what we might leverage in terms of where their experience is, where their funding came from and what plan and strategy they've developed for their Main Street that we could look at and leverage. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anybody here who would like to comment. Community Development Office's plans, but if there is, if there are any comments or anybody would like to approach Melissa, she can be reached at the Community Development Office. And what number is that?
It's five zero eight, six three four, two three two eight.
Six three four?
Two three two eight.
Two three two eight. All right, Melissa.
As far as what the chairman just said, that's what you want, you want to elicit proposal, the ideas from the citizenry, right?
Any suggestions and comments from the community, the board's department heads?
Okay, yeah, all right.
Yes.
You know, we've talked about people becoming engaged as a result of the casino and there's a lot of talk about people becoming involved. This is a great opportunity, whether it be through supportive efforts that we'd like to see with community development, participating with the IDC, and there's other various committees and boards that they could certainly volunteer for. So this is one that's worthwhile and
Definitely.
the Community Development Office has done a great job in Milford. And I appreciate your support of that and your participation in that. I know with Sue going to the senior center, that was a loss, but you seem to have jumped in and we encourage you to
Thank you.
go forward and think big.
Yes, thank you, I look forward to the opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Chrisifouli, Highway Surveyor.
Hello.
Hello, Scott.
It's timely that you come here this evening.
Yeah, between snowstorms, a bit of a time.
Yeah, we've got another one coming tomorrow.
Yeah, five inches.
Nice job with the storm this weekend. It came at a perfect time, I know.
Yeah.
Or at least commuters.
We wouldn't have wanted that storm on a Monday morning.
Right.
So the ice on the next morning was crazy.
But for the benefit of the board and the community, Scott and I spoke last week and along with Rick, we've talked about having various department heads come in, provide updates, what's new within your department, any help needed. But floor is yours and
All right, well, the newest thing we got is we installed GPS for our private contractors. In years past, we had anywhere from fifty to seventy outside trucks plowing snow. Very hard to keep track of them, there's issues of them getting lost, breaking down, safety concerns. And what we've seen is a lot of cities like Boston has GPS, Worcester runs GPS, and a lot of the bigger towns are starting to go to GPS. You know, for many reasons. The things that we are capable of doing, watching, you know, where trucks are, knowing when they're stuck somewhere, you know, if there's no contact with them, we can actually go on a map and see that they are weak in contact and we can find them. It's very hard to track that many vehicles at one time. We do have traces out there or checkers, like we call them. You know, they're driving around each route, they have different sections of town to keep track of everybody. In years past, we have had trucks break down and not known that for two or three hours and they've been stuck out there and there was no way of knowing it. Now we get, you know, if a truck stops for a certain amount of time, we know, we contact them, we find them, make sure everything's all right, broken down, stuck, lost, whatever it is. So with all that, the safety was a big concern, so you know, we wanted to try to, you know, stay on top of that. We don't want anybody freezing to death out there or, you know, having a major problem. The efficiency that this whole thing gives for us, the fact that they can be called in at four AM and as soon as they get on their route, they can punch themselves in. They have a GPS unit, they punch it in like a time clock. If they leave what you call a geofence, their route is actually marked out on a map. If they leave that, we are notified of that, so we can contact them, see what's going on, you know, are they taking a break, whatever they're doing. Through the night or especially at nighttime, we're always looking, you know, making sure roads getting plowed. So like I said, we have the checkers, but a lot of times we can't find the plow trucks. They might be, you know, some routes are big, they might be five streets away or across town because they're separated. So now we can simply look on the map and find them. It's, it helps a lot. And if they want to go and break, which after so many hours, you understand they need to break, they can punch out or they punch into what they call a yellow zone. It's meaning they're not on the road plowing, they're still in working, you know, and we can keep track of the time of that, you know, if that goes over time, obviously, we contact them, see what's going on. If they break down and it's a quick fix and they got a fix, fine, we know that. At the end of the night, instead of wasting another hour coming back to the barn in snowstorm and traffic trying to punch out, they can punch themselves out also. So just from the punch in and punch out, we've saved up to an hour on each truck of wasted time, driving from the highway department to their route, you know, et cetera. I mean, the capabilities of the GPS are just unlimited.
Now, can you differentiate between the sanders and the plows on the GPS?
Well, we haven't put it on our own vehicles.
Okay.
So only our own town trucks do the sanding.
Okay.
We have nine trucks that sand.
All right.
This is mostly for the outside contracts. Our own trucks between phones, personal cell phones, work cell phones and radios, we always have contact with them, so they're easy to track. But for damage, plow damage, cars getting hit, mailbox getting wrecked, property getting damaged, we'll actually be able to go back and see if our plow truck was there at the time of the incident.
At that time, okay.
You have what you call a breadcrumb trail and it stays in the memory up to thirty days. So if we had five snowstorms, you tell me the date, we can track the plow truck to that exact spot, right to the minute, with speed, location, direction they were traveling, all that information is given. It's like you can't hide from us. Nothing was trying to, and honestly, a lot of the plow drivers accepted it as a good thing. They realize that, you know, things can happen and they want to be safe also, so.
Yeah, I'm encouraged by it. I think, you know, somebody could be out on Haven Street and suffer a heart attack or hit a tree and, you know, we always assume people can get to their cell phones, that may or may not be the case, and if a vehicle's idle, by you knowing that, they're safer.
From experience alone, before cell phones were a big thing, even myself plowing has been stuck, I was stuck at the bottom of Dead End Street with no houses around. At three o'clock in the morning, I could not move for two hours before someone finally drove by and saw me. I wasn't going to get out of the truck and walk.
Right.
It was snowing like mad, the truck was running and I had no way of contacting anybody. I know cell phones are a big thing these days, but you never know, some of the storms, the cell phones aren't working and we don't want to just rely on that.
Right. Does this mean you'll also have less checkers on the road?
Well, last night was our first run with it, our last storm, Saturday night. We kept the same checkers, just to make sure everything was going all right. We had a few glitches.
Sure.
A few GPS units weren't working correctly, so hopefully tomorrow we'll have it all set up right.
Okay.
But yeah, eventually it'll lead to probably just one or two, where we have four now.
You know, people, we don't often think of, you know, these small storms and think big, but we've been in situations before where there were large blizzards, ice storms. We just hit the five-year anniversary of a major ice storm.
Right.
It was about thirty miles north of us, but they can be catastrophic. And I think this, this helps our emergency preparedness and response, certainly knowing where people are and being able to help them or at least coordinate closest vehicles to the next emergency is helpful. But I'll go to board members, see if they have any comments or questions for you.
First, Scott, I just want to commend you as every year, I think, doing outstanding job, very efficient, I think with the envy of the area communities and on how Milford treats its roads in the wintertime and so a good job on that.
Thank you.
Just to talk about, now last year in our financial planning, you, I think we allocated more monies working with the Finance Committee. Was it about a million dollars for roads?
Yeah, they allocated another five hundred thousand on top of the five hundred that we already have.
So what were you able to do with that?
We got a lot of roads done. I mean, we, I don't have a list on me, but we got quite a bit done. And we jammed it all in one year and got it all done. You know, with that, that million dollars plus the eight hundred and sixty we got from the state, that was a lot of work. I mean, we, I don't even know how we got it all done, but we did, we spent all of it. And we did a lot of stuff, a lot of roads.
Yeah.
Put a little dent in it.
Yeah.
Maybe we could get an update for the board of which streets were completed last year.
Sure, I can do that.
That's a direct benefit, you know, there's a residence on some of these streets, haven't been done in a long time.
No, I keep track of it on a spreadsheet in the computer, what we do every, what we spend. And every, every little year is a little short section, and then last year was huge, adding an old page on. So we got a lot done. You know, like I said, I didn't bring the list here, but I like
Well, I think a few years ago, this board went to the FinCom and we wanted to work with them in allocating more monies every year when we do have the monies to provide to you so that those roads can be done. Because the monies that we were allocating before just weren't enough.
Right.
And you know, it takes, it'll take twenty years to catch up by this way. Hopefully, we can augment that every year if we have it, so you can do more and more roads that need it.
Right, it was last March when we get our, they send out the amount of money, chapter ninety is giving out, and they added like four hundred and fifty thousand on that. So it was, you know, another million and a half plus the five hundred, we had a big chunk of change again. And as the summer started getting closer, they started diminishing it. So actually, we ended up getting less. We usually get eight hundred and twenty thousand, we got like six hundred and twenty thousand. So I had all the work pre-scheduled for all that, we had to cancel a lot of things unfortunately. And then in September, they gave us back a little bit more, like another two hundred, so we'll use that in the spring. But I thought we're going to have another big year, it just didn't turn out.
Sure. And it's not just, it's just not taking care of Sure. And it's not just, it's just not taking care of roads or doing roads and all that. I mean, every time we, we have a project, we call, we call the highways. We call you. Whether it be the Milford Pond Boat Ramp or the Fields Project or at the Heights, when Sue ran out of money, you're always very amenable to helping out.
Right, I understand. We can do a lot of things. We can save the town a lot of money, you know, just with our equipment and employees rather than hiring contractors to do everything. You know, but the problem is, we do run out of time, you know, and we don't finish everything we want to do. You know, we're working a little bit with the Vernon Grove Cemetery. We're actually using their employees for the winter for snow plowing. In turn, we're gonna, you know, plow their lot and patch their roads and do all that for them. So, they can save a little money also, so.
And I think, you know, by doing all that, certainly want to commend you on that because whenever you help out, you're saving the town money.
Absolutely.
And if the budget is so much for a particular project and we don't have as much money, you're always there to help out. So, you know, completes the project. It's good for the residents and the neighborhood and the town saves money at the same time. So, you know, I certainly want to commend you in all those things.
We enjoy doing that, absolutely.
Okay. Good luck Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you Dean Bryant.
Yeah, Scott, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, no, let me take this...
A little tired, but okay.
Let me take this opportunity to, you know, again publicly thank you for the work that your department did along with the Sewer Department and the Milford Water Company up at the Fields Project. And, you know, that touches right on what Dino's talking about. You know, we needed to have the water and sewer line run from West Fountain Street in about, what, a hundred feet plus to a, you know, to a central location. And, you know, your department was right there. John Minini was right there. Dave Condry came in with the Water Company. And, you know, a contractor estimated to me that that saved the town about fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, that's real work on a project that just about everybody in town enjoys and is going to benefit from. And if not for your department stepping forward and doing that, it would be very, very difficult to try to get that done with the, you know, extremely tight budget that we have up there. So, that was a great job and that's just one of many. But that's certainly a recent one and one that I've had a hands-on involvement with.
Yeah, obviously, knowing a lot about construction, I know with those prices, cost, you know, dig two hundred-foot trenches and the work that goes into it. And if we have the time to do it, why don't we just do it? I, you know, I completely understand.
And, you know, the nice thing, I mean, I was up there when Jimmy Chazinski was cutting into the dirt and stuff and he, you know, popped up a couple of boulders. And I said, you know, just put them right on line. That's what we've done with the boulders. And he's got them right there on the corner and we find some more, we'll put some more.
Right. If that weren't too big, that would be, that would be an extra you'd be paid for.
That's right, you know.
Yeah, no, if we can do it, we definitely want to do it.
But it was nice, you know, he put them right there and you don't even know the difference. And, you know, if we had more, we'd put more up to prevent the cars from driving through the fence.
Oh, anything we can do within reason, we can do it. I mean, that's, that's always been my way. I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, no, so that was...
That's for the community. That's for everybody.
It was a great job. So, really appreciate it. And are we on track for step two of that project?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
All right, you're ready to go.
See, they broke ground already, so.
Yeah, we're gonna run it another few feet, but that's okay.
Well, I think it's gonna snow the rest of the winter, so.
I think we'll be, yeah.
It's gonna slow us down.
Yeah, yeah. But no, good job. Thank you.
Thank you Brian. And you're still running the leaf program, so that means the program that...
Speaking of leaves, we had, in years past, I mean, the last few years, it was getting difficult. Seven, eight weeks we were into it. We couldn't finish it. There were so many leaves. And for whatever reason, this year, right on schedule.
Okay, good.
No problems. We cruised right through it. So, I guess it's going good.
And you're still providing that mulch to the town?
Yes.
You've got that program?
We are composting. I'm actually sending some more paperwork into DEP just to make sure my compost side is all, you know, up to date and everything's right. So, we're gonna continue to compost it and we have, we have so much composted sometime. We're gonna have to find out, you know, figure out what we're gonna do with it. But we're gonna keep composting.
Okay. All right, well, good job. I agree with the members of the board that got a good program going and some dedicated employees. Keep going. And thanks for all your help on the other things that don't show, that doesn't show up so much. But I know that you're helping everyone in various ways in the various departments, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you Scott.
Thanks Scott.
Good luck tomorrow Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hit the streets.
Next up on the agenda, we have Milford Nissan Corporation Amendment to Class One License. To introduce this just a little bit, please sit down. Milford Nissan Corporation, three twenty East Main Street, filed an application to amend its Class One license to permit additional storage and display of vehicles at one forty-eight, one fifty East Main Street. Site plan review is required by the Planning Board. So, any vote that the Board might be inclined to make would have to be subject to site plan review and approval. We provided notice to you and I'll let you introduce yourself, but I'm guessing you're...
Okay, I'm Jeff Batta. I'm the owner of Milford Nissan.
And does that pretty much describe what you're looking to do? I know you've been in front of it.
Yes. On November fourteenth, I went to a ZBA hearing to describe what we like, what we wanted to do. Received some very good input with regard to Hamilton Avenue. I was originally gonna have all the cars up front and allow people to pull in off of Hamilton or Free Street. And one of the ZBA members felt that because it's a one-way street, we just put a continuous row of cars down the Hamilton Street side so that no one could pull in and then back out into the one-way street. So, we, I have a drawing. If you'd like, I can put it on the board. And I think we dropped off copies this morning of the site plan that we submitted.
Hold on just a minute if the members want to see.
Okay.
See that. I'm not opposed to that at all. This is the former Imperial?
It's a part of it.
Part of it.
It's a section that's been sold to Mark Rizzoli. So, it's north of Hamilton Street and it's about a hundred-foot wide strip of approximately half an acre.
Okay, I'm familiar with that a lot.
That Mark purchased from Kevin Meehan at Imperial. Then it's been, I believe, for twenty or thirty years used for, as part of Imperial, but...
Sure. Yeah, it says, you're looking at the building to the left of Hamilton.
Is that right? If you're looking at the...
What was the former Imperial?
Imperial, it's on the left, yes, correct.
Dean, any questions or comments?
Sir, can you just, just mention again what's gonna happen with no access from Hamilton Street? What are you gonna do there?
What we're going to do is line the cars so that no one can pull in. So, they'll kind of be in a reverse J. They'll start right at the back of the property line on Hamilton, come all the way up and kind of be displayed. They're gonna be, you know, separated so that they have good visibility. They're not just gonna be put in there like sardines. Come around the corner to the curb cut on Free Street. And that's where people will be able to pull in and actually revise the plan and have, I believe, there's five parking spaces, which is what Larry Duncan required. So, we changed that today. Also, there's a concern about delineating an area for the residents in the White House in the back. There's, there's two cars for the residents of that house. So, there's actually more than enough room. I'm, actually, the special permit was granted for thirty-car display. That resident has two vehicles. A rule of thumb in vehicle storage, because I've been doing this all my life, is you could put about two hundred and forty cars on an acre. So, this is a half an acre. You could put a hundred and twenty there. We're looking to put thirty-two. So, there's plenty of room left over for everything that we have to accomplish.
What type of inventory do you envision having there? Which portion of your inventory?
Well, I'm going to set up a selection, you know, obviously some things that I have perhaps a duplicate of, but just to kind of show a full representation of our line. You know, I obviously have, I have cars stored on two twenty-seven East Main and our dealership at three twenty. But just to put a display of some things that are unique, I also have signage that'll be on the cars. So, there's no question when the people stop to view. You know, obviously, someone pulls on a car lot, they think someone's gonna come out to help them. So, we have these yellow signs that basically say, you know, "Thank you for visiting the Milford Nissan Vehicle Display Lot. For more information, visit our showroom at three twenty East Main Street." And then simple directions, "Turn left on East Main Street Route sixteen." And we are half a mile ahead on the left. And then website information. So, we made them in bright yellow, so hopefully everybody, as they're looking at the cars, really kind of knows why they're there. And it's our intention. I might even actually laminate them so I can just keep reusing them. There's no reason, you know, we're moving a lot of cars in and out of there. But Garryer and Hellman made a very nice display where the cars would be, you know, kind of fanned out. So, they'd kind of radius the corners so you wouldn't have, you know, visibility issues with, you know, a car right up there if someone's trying to pull out and they see a car. You know, the corners of the lot will be kind of rounded as we fan the cars. So, I think, I think it'll be aesthetically pretty nice. Certainly, there's more than enough room for thirty-car display and not encroach on the residents. We will be painting a yellow line. I spoke to Mr. Rizzoli today just to get his permission because he owns the property about, you know, delineating it as shown in the plan. He's fine with that. We may have to wait obviously until we can get some dry pavement. There was also an eight-by-eight sign face there. And special permit was also granted just for a simple sign that, you know, Milford Nissan, a logo, vehicle display lot. There's, you know, nothing else like...
Sure.
You know, directional sign would say, you know...
That would be on the pole, right?
On the pole, yes. There's an existing frame there. At this point, I'm not planning on lighting it because this is a situation that Mark is maybe developing the property for something else at a later date. So, for as long as it's available, I'm going to do this and, you know, might be a year.
And that would look more pleasing than what's there now. It's broken down, whatever the case is.
Yeah. I mean, certainly the sign case doesn't look very nice. It's sort of fallen apart and you can see the ballasts and bulbs are in there. It's just, you know, it should have been probably removed completely or, you know, left intact.
Sir, and as far as Hamilton Street, you'll, you'll watch that because I think that's become a problem over the past year or so. It's become a real problem. A lot more people coming up that street, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of one-way signs on that street. But to the extent that we can control it, I have, I can show you here. We're going to park the cars longways here just to, I think, it's the most efficient design. And there's really no way for anybody to pull in. Now, I'm saying that, they may pull over the side.
Right.
We'll kind of monitor it. And I know there's a lot of concerns from the residents on that street. You know, obviously, traditionally with Imperial being there for so many years, it's understandable.
And when do you plan on doing this?
Well, I guess we have to go for site plan approval sometime in January, I believe. It's, I don't know if the date has been set, around January sixth. And I think after that, I'd have hopefully all the necessary approvals in place. Like I say, I have a special permit from the ZBA. I need obviously your blessing and then the final blessing of the Planning Board. So, the Planning Board has already looked at it prior and given kind of a, we're okay with it because it's the same use that it was for so many years.
And as customary, we go out to the various department heads and I do want to read from that. The Building Commission indicates this is a commercial business zone. It's allowable use. And as you said, it's a use that has existed previously. Town Planner indicated the ZBA granted a special permit, eleven fifteen thirteen, for thirty vehicles max, no access from Hamilton Street. Planning Board site plan required. Tax Collector indicates there's no outstanding taxes. Town Treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire Department has no objections. Police have no objections. And of course, we have and you have the decision by the ZBA. Any concerns with the conditions they've placed on the property? You've spoken to what I can see from those.
No, I mean, I think I proposed a fair number of cars for the display. As I said, I mean, you could really realistically put a hundred and twenty cars there. What I'm trying to accomplish is something a little bit different. I need, I need a little more space, but I really would like to have, you know, more of a display. And part of the reason for that is, you know, you're abutting another business that does essentially the same thing. I mean, they're selling municipal vehicles.
Right.
But I want to differentiate myself and, you know, display the cars differently so that as people go by, they see that it's a different, different company. And certainly with the traffic that goes by there, it's a good opportunity for additional exposure.
Okay. Do you need any questions or comments?
Yeah, are we amending a Class One license or a Class Two license?
Well, I have a Class One license because I'm a franchise new car dealer. I believe by right, you then, you know, we obviously sell used cars because we trade cars on the new cars, so.
Okay.
But I operate under a Class One license. I think it said Class Two license on one of the documents I saw today.
Yeah, well, this one here, I didn't know. It said to amend Class One to amend Class Two. So, I wasn't sure. And then it's, it varies, so I didn't know what we were doing.
But I submitted it as Class One, but I did get a letter.
But just a Class One.
It's a Class One.
I did see a letter today or Friday, I think.
This, yeah, I was just looking at this application. It looked like it was both.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm glad you showed the plan. I was gonna ask to take a look at that. It looks like a good operation and I wish you the best with it.
Yeah, I think we are working to get it lit. I want to tell you that. I don't know, because it's kind of tied into the electrical circuit at Municipal Partners. That's something Mark Rizzoli's working on. If it's not lit, I'll live with it. But we're working to, you know, to have it lit for obviously safety. And it's also good for the area because there's some ambient light that helps with safety. That's, that's still in the works.
Well, just be careful with the illumination going into the neighbors' houses because that issue does spring up in some places down there.
Sure. Yeah, the lights are already in place. I believe that it's tied into the old Imperial Chevrolet building. So, Mark Rizzoli's gonna work with them on that.
Good. Well, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
All right, so I'll look for a motion to amend the Class One license for Milford Nissan Corporation to allow display vehicles at one forty-eight and one fifty East Main Street?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
Lots of both in favor. That's unanimous. Lots of luck there.
Good luck.
Merry Christmas.
Good luck, yeah. Merry Christmas.
Next, we have Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, the Town Hall will be closed at one PM on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. And at one PM on Tuesday, December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, opening on the day after each closing. I do want to thank publicly Senior Custodian Carlos Benjamin and Highway Surveyor Scott Crisafouli for both restoring and putting up the Christmas wreaths along Main Street. I also want to thank publicly Brazza and Mancini for the use of their truck. Their efforts are just most appreciated. They worked quickly on a very limited timeframe. I also want to inform the Board that I met with a Tricia Goslin and a John Emecpe of the Mass Rehabilitation Commission Internship Program to discuss their internship program. They seek to place individuals at various businesses, including municipalities, to allow them to work for eight weeks. They're paid through their program. It's kind of a step to trying to get some of these individuals back into the workforce. They asked if we would consider trying to place individuals here at Town Hall. We were actually able to place one individual so far who was working with our custodial department. The Senior Center Director has also interviewed two additional interns who will be considered for placement. So, I feel it was a worthwhile program. And I think it's just, I want to thank Dino for pointing the program out to me. Finally, regarding the Technology Task Force, the committee has been now meeting every two weeks. The goal is to create a complete IT plan. We expect to have the IT assessment report from Worldband within the next two weeks. We will then have a complete inventory, which will include the age and capacity of all equipment for both Town Hall and the school system. We will have a recommendation for equipment replacement cycles and a recommendation for how to handle these IT services. The committee is now focusing on developing the structure and the budget for the department to include personnel, equipment, updates, and security. In addition, after consulting with both Worldband and our current director, we are seeking to implement upgrades at Town Hall over the next three to four months to possibly include a new server, computers, software upgrades. We are also considering implementing a ticketing system so that we can monitor efficiently and handle technology issues at Town Hall. These are important needs that we feel should be addressed at this time and can and will be incorporated into the overall IT budget as it is developed. So, these are things that we are seeking to do short-term, but will certainly blend in with the long-term setup of the IT department. We are discussing the personnel for the department. We're likely to be including a director. We're looking at implementing technicians. We definitely know we need assistance. We hope within the next two months, not hope, we will have a definitive plan to present to this Board. And also, we're working with Chris Moran, who's a member of our task force in the Finance Committee, so that we can have a fully developed plan and be ready for May Town Meeting so we can fully develop this budget and the structure of the department. And again, the committee has been working every two weeks now with meetings to try to make this thing happen and happen correctly. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members of the Board?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
No, I'll say.
Okay. Yeah, so Rick and I have had some discussions over the past few weeks and months. And, you know, there has to be a tactical approach on how we keep the systems operating that Rick is working on. And, you know, that's certainly part of the focus, but I... And, you know, that's certainly part of the focus, but what I continue to encourage Rick to do is look at the strategic, the organization and long-term funding requirements and see how this, how this organization and how this IT is gonna be structured to deliver the services, uh, town-wide, um, that are necessary in order to, uh, keep us up to speed and on task. And so, um, yeah, before we go too far on the tactical side, I want to make sure that this board's up to speed and, and bought into the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Uh, once that's developed, and you, you expect that within two months?
Uh, I, I, I think we need to do that in order to properly be ready for, uh, town meeting and, uh, this board and the finance committee.
We're talking, can we say, you know, mid-February, late February?
Uh, I'm hoping latest early March, but yes, uh, we, again, we're meeting every two weeks to try to make this happen, uh, within that timeframe, and I believe we can do that.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have old business window restoration and awarding of contract.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, as you know, the board on October seventh awarded a contract to GVW Inc. of East Boston for the town hall window, uh, restoration project. Um, you also approved using a resident engineer with experience in historic renovations to monitor the work. Uh, we did, uh, submit a request for qualifications. We received seven, uh, respondents to the RFQ. We have a selection committee composed of myself, town engineer, and the building inspector. We reviewed these proposals on a qualifications basis only. Uh, after review, the committee is in agreement to award the contract to Lammerow and Pagano Architects. We have negotiated not to exceed cost for the project of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and six dollars. Um, I've attached to your correspondence a memo from town engineer, Vorni Reese. We have also met with GVW. They have removed four windows to date from town hall. One from the second floor, one from the first floor, and two of the ocular windows in the attic. They will use the two rectangular windows in order to, to order materials and plan their approach to fixing the remainder of the same-sized windows. This initial effort will probably take three to four weeks. Once this is done, however, the turnaround time for the remaining windows should be eight to ten days, uh, rather than the three to four weeks. So, we will have our resident engineer onboard, um, for the inspections to begin, uh, within that timeframe.
Okay.
We've set out a very specific contract with the resident engineer, uh, as far as trips, uh, to the site of GVW where they do restore the windows, which is included.
So, we're looking for a motion to, um, a, a motion as recommended by town engineer, town administrator, to award the contract to Lammerow, like, Pagano?
Yes.
Um, to provide resident engineer services to town hall restoration project?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Uh, next, we have town administrator, job description. Uh, this is provided to the board. If the board, uh, would like to provide any feedback either now or in the next, uh, week, uh, for, to the job description, please, um, provide your comments to the town administrator. Is there any thoughts now that need to be?
The only thing I want to make sure is that, uh, on page four or whatever it is on the recommended qualifications, just want to make sure that there's a minimum, that the person has a minimum of a bachelor's degree in public administration or finance with five to seven years related work experience. So, I think there are many, many people out there that, um, would fit this very nicely and we just have to make sure the educational, uh, qualifications are there, Rick, that's okay.
Brian?
Uh, it looked very, um, comprehensive to me. There was really nothing that jumped out that I would want to add or delete.
I had the same comment as Dino and was actually gonna ask, uh, if we might not want to consider, uh, a master's. Something to keep in mind, there's a lot of folks out there with that. And, uh, you know, it's part of what we said, uh, as a board when we transitioned that program to go from voted to appointed, that, uh, we could assure ourselves a high level of competence and, uh, educational experience. So, uh, consider that and that's part of the feedback that I'll provide you.
Okay.
In front of the board, um, but not stuck on it so much, it's just a suggestion.
And that's consistent, Bill, with the, uh, the former two town treasures that we've had, you know, Barbara Oger and the late Tony Randall. I mean, they had, uh, they were well-educated, well-experienced, so it just fits right in.
Yeah, and, uh, I also try to, once in a while, uh, look at private sector models, um, you know, if somebody were to take over an organization of this size, uh, anywhere in the private sector, you would see a master's, uh, for sure there. But take it as feedback.
Thank you.
The members might feedback more as they think, think through this beyond today. Uh, any old business from the members of the board? Dino?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
No.
Okay. Uh, new business? Woodland School Building Committee, proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. Dean, you're on that committee, so we could get an update to.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is something that the, uh, the building committee's been working on for a long time and, uh, the committee went to the zoning board, uh, about a month ago to present some of the issues that, uh, as far as the layout, the concerns, uh, why everything has to be done at the state's request, otherwise we won't get on the list. And, and then the zoning board voted, voted in the affirmative and then there were a couple of individuals who, uh, who filed an appeal. And so, tonight, uh, Mr. Chaky and, uh, Mr. Bruce are here along with town council to present to us what has to be needed. And the recommendation is to go to town meeting in February with two articles. One would be for the rezoning and the other article would be for the, uh, the cost of the, uh, of the edifice going forward. So, I'm sure Aldo and Jonathan would, uh, certainly add more to that if necessary.
Okay. Brian?
Uh, no, I, you know, I got the memo from Jerry and, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, so the, uh, motion would be to?
The zoning article is attached and that would be the, uh, the article itself for the funding if the zoning article is, uh.
Well, you'd be forwarding the zoning article to the planning board, number one, and number two, you should schedule a town meeting.
Right.
There are two things you should do today.
Okay, so, um, I'll look to the town administrator. Do you have a proposed date?
I believe we're looking for February tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, so that'll be the first motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Schedule a town meeting for February tenth to address these two articles and any other things on the warrant.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Uh, the next is to take the proposed, uh, zoning changes and remand to the planning board.
Motion is correct.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Is there anything you gentlemen would like to add?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We're working at resolving the issues.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work. I know this has been over ten years in the making, so, uh, appreciate you plowing forward and, uh, continue to do what's right for the kids. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Aldo.
Board members have anything else to add under new business? Dean?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Brian?
Uh, just step F two, we need to, I don't know if you wanted to handle that.
That was an, an add-on.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, yep.
Um, I'll, I'll let Brian, uh, introduce this and talk to it.
Well, it's just an application from the architect for the, uh, waiver of the building permit fee for the new restroom building, uh, at the high school field.
So, as is.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
As is customary, uh, for town projects, so we're not pushing money from department to department. The, uh, contractors asked for a waiver to the building permit cost. There's a motion.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay, now I'll go back to you, Brian. Anything, uh, else under new business?
No.
Thank you. Next, under correspondence, we have a letter of resignation from Teresa Persico.
Motion, we accept with regret.
Yeah, she's been a member of the personnel board for sixteen years and, uh, um, it is with regret that we lose, uh, that much experience and institutional knowledge. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Uh, next, we have correspondence from the police chief, who's updating us, uh, at, at this board's request. And, uh, I think specifically, Dino, we're looking to upgrade that signal light to something that was either larger or something that was more obvious that might help us give greater warning to, uh, traffic at the fruit and, uh, South Main Street intersection, given the large number of accidents. And the chief is updating us, and I know, I'm guessing that the board members have had an opportunity to go down that street and see the new warning light with the white strobe that's integrated in, within it. I think it's a significant improvement over the last light that was there.
Yeah, no question.
Yeah, I don't think we can do too much when it comes to public safety and we had a demonstrated issue there, so, uh, any thoughts, Brian, or?
No.
Okay.
No, glad to see it's working.
Get your attention.
Yeah, it's much more visible.
All right, any, um, correspondence from the members of the board?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Brian?
Uh, just the, we need to appoint on the field committee, the school committee person.
Okay, under the informal correspondence, there's a request, uh, appointment representative from the school committee to the ad hoc, uh, field committee.
Mr. Marius, is it? Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Marius.
Yeah, second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. All right, um, next, we have executive session. Uh, there'll be two reasons to go into that executive session. One is a matter involving litigation, uh, the community's involved in. And the next is, uh, Mace grievances for two employees.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor. I'll go to a roll call vote.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
I also vote in favor, it's unanimous. Uh, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you.